Katturudiyai parishutha namathukkumai mundaavada
Glory be unto the holy name of the Lord
Thonni thi irandam sangeedam, pani rendu, padimundru vasanangalai naam vaasikke kettkalam
90 second Psalms verses 12 and 13 The writer shall flourish like the palm tree, he shall grow like a cedar in Lebanon. Those that be planted in the house of the Lord shall flourish in the courts of a God.
Neethi man pani poos edithu, leevanoonilulla kederuvipol valarvan, kartrude aalayithirin naatappattavakal, engal devadi prahorangali seyithiruparakal
Katturudiyai parishutha namathukkumai mundaavada
Glory be unto the holy name of the Lord
Indriya message, katturudiyai aalayithil naatappattavarkal
Today's message is those who are planted in the house of the Lord
Devunudai aalayithil naatappattavarkal enkara talipile naam indra geek katturudiyai varthi ekke kettalam
We shall hear the word of God under the title, "Those who planted in the house of the Lord"
Ulakathile palavidamana viruchingale kurithu naam parkamudiyum
We read about various trees in the world
Ananal avikuruyi aalake oru viruchitthin aalake oru opputte solappatturukkare
Our spiritual life is compared to the life of a tree
Ananal naam devanall naatappattavarkal aakai urkavendum
But we should be those who are planted by the Lord
Ulakathile palavidamana viruchingal chedigal thavarangalai naam bumile parkaram
We can find various kinds of trees and plants and shrubs on the earth
Ningal hindu madathin ningal parthal
If you consider the Hindu religion
Oovu koivilukku oovu thala virucham enkara oru viruchatay veythurukkare
For every temple, they have a particular kind of a tree
Andha marantha andha koiludai sirappam sam
That one of the cheapest aspect of that temple is the tree there
Ananal namukke appudi endhavidamana viruchingalankkada
But we do not hold such trees for us
Naam indha sabailai naam mulaitthavarkal alla
We have not sprouted in this church
Naam vairu oru edathal irundhu pudingi naatappattavarkal
We are being plucked out from elsewhere and are planted here
Ananal than vettiyadukka patta kanmalai yin thondiyadukka patta thuraviyin nenaitthukollinrue vedam suttikaattukare
That is why the Bible points out to us saying, "Look unto the rock from whence you were hewn and the whole of the pit from where you were digged"
Nel vayalkalai ningal parthal
If you consider the fields
Anga, ane nel vayalkalai ningal parthal
If you consider the wheat fields
Anga enna nadakkare
What happens there?
Adu oru edathal paathile naadu vedikke potturukum
In one place it is being sown
Adukke perakada eduthu inno oru edathal ennasiyivanga, ane naatray naduvarakal
It will be plucked out from there and planted elsewhere
Ananal than indha vasanam jollukkare, katturudiyai aalayithil naatappattavarkal
That is why this scripture portion says, "Those who are planted in the house of God"
Avakal engal devunudai aalayangalil selithiruparkal
They shall flourish in the house of the Lord
Appa devunudai aalayathil enna naatappadukkare oru experience urukkare
So there is an experience of being planted in the temple of God
Ananal devunudai aalayathil mulchidiyai avan naatturadhal
But not to be planted as a thorny bush in the house of God
Kodikkanakana thavarangal irundhalum, kattar naattukkare sila viruchingalai naan ungalukku munbaha vayke virmugare
Though there are crowns of plants, but I want to sit before your certain trees which the Lord will plant
Unne devan kandadathal enna naattumudiyaga virmuguradhal
God does not desire to plant you in the place where you wish
Avan thannudai aalayathil unne naattavirmugare
He wants to plant you in his house
Ni katturudiyai aalayathil enna naatappattal, avurudai aalaya prakaratle ni seyithu oongi valaravendum
If you are planted in the house of the Lord, then you should flourish in the courts of the Lord
Sumar narpothu varudangal, yiruvudhu varudangal, patthu varudangal enrue naam kanakke jollukkaram
We just consider the time, the amount, the period that we have lived for forty years or twenty years and so on
Appudi aanal ningal athane varudangalukku munbaha indha sabailai naatappattavarkal
If that is so, you have been planted so many years in this church
Naam Keralaathil oru edathukku poyirundhu poruzhe
When I went to a particular place at Kerala
Anga teek museum enrue oru orukkar, teekumara museum
There is one museum which was having the teek museum
Ah, adavu vara endhavidamana porulamekada
No other materials there
Anga vandhi teek, ane teekumarathukku mattharamai oru museum ochirukkara
Only for the teek wood, they had a museum there
Naam adukkula ponnai
I went there
Yattanayoo disen disen thakuruk
There are various kinds of teak
Oburu naatthalilla oburuvidamana thakuragala anga ochirukkara
The teak wood which is taken from various countries are placed there
Appo oru teekumara thakatpanni ochirukkara, adu indha halla pathikirukun nainikara, indha size larku
A one teak wood which was being hewn out
Nala priya size
It is half the size of this hall
Adu vetti abdi ochirukkara
It was hewn out and placed there
Adhile, ane marathinudaiyai valachchi adhile urk
There the growth of the tree is mentioned there
Ningal ungalukka thariyam tamilla vayiram paanjirukkun soluvaga
In Tamil, they would say so
Ningal teekumarathal allam paathinkana adhile neerukke, oru design urukku, adu daan adunudai valachchinudai tanmai
There will be a particular design that is found on the teak tree which is a growth that is found there
Adhile, potruga, ayyati ainuruvadham, appudi paathinkana, ayyati ainur round urk
He is mentioned there as thousand five hundred years, it means it has thousand five hundred circles
Kajini epo vendhan soliyadhile, adhile pottu, anga appo irundhu enna mara ensiyade Valandhu, ittena varshathukku perakku vetta pattadinnu ochirukkara
It is mentioned when it was planted and when it was, how long it grew and when it was hewn out, it is mentioned there
Katturudiyai aalayathil enna naatappattavarkal
We are planted in the house of the Lord
Appa andha marathukku overu varsham vandha oru, andha vayadakurikiramari, oru round, oru vayiram paanjcha oru anubha undak
So as one year has passed by, there is one circle which is formed on the tree
Appu ningal rachikka pottu, abhishekam betthin indha sabaila vandhu, parishuthavangalai, odiyilulla parishuthavangalai sudandharathal vandhu, ittena varshaache, ningal evadu stanga ayirukkano
You have been saved, you have been anointed, you are coming to the fellowship of the saints in the light and so many years have passed by, how strong you must be?
Ni katturudiyai aalayathil naatappattavan
Are you planted in the house of the Lord?
Adhala innaki keelvi
This is the question today
Appudi katturudiyai aalayathil naatappattal, ungalukku aalake eppudu urkavendum
If you are planted in the house of the Lord, how should your life be?
Naam adikkidi jolluvan, naam indha sabainudaiyai sandhadharar alla
As I often say, we are not subscribers of this church
Yada vandhu kaanikka kuuduthu, moyilidittu poramari varathim alla
We are not a group which will just give the offering and leave the place
Alathu oru velvisharam alla
We are not a well-visher of the church
Sabainudai anudabihal alla naam ellaro
We are not just subscribers or just a member of the church
Indha churche appudi nadakkadinnu pakka, audience sum alla
We are not just spectators or audience of the church
Naam daan indha sabainudaiyai urupinarkal
We are the members of the church
Naam daan indha sabainudaiyai mudheyelumbukal
We are the backbone of the church
Naam daan indha sabainudaiyai thoongal
We are the pillars of the church
Ningal adukkuru thu Bible la palavidangalila ningal parkamudiyum
Various points of the Bible you can read concerning this
Ananal kattar enna jollukkare, ennudai aalayathil naan unne naatii urukkare
But the Lord says, "I have planted you in my house"
Oru velan ningal kaattal irundhrukkalam
Perhaps you were in the forest
Ningal varan parangal, enga vedugalila ningal crotons chedigal allam vangi vaykiringa
You grow the crotons at your homes
Appudi dana?
Isn't that true?
Huh? Palavidamana crotons vangaranga, adukka agal lechakannakla chalavidi kara, uyya karangal urkka, viswasiyakal
There are servants of God and believers who spend lakhs for growing of these crotons
Chedigalukku mattume
Only for the plants
Maasa ayyarakannakla, parishathal lechakannakla chalavidi kara, viswasiyakal urkka
There are believers who spend almost thousands and lakhs for the tree or the plants
Ningal chala naadugalla, ilathan namai India alai, chala kaadugalukku ponga, anga indha chedigal allu urk
If you go to India or to other countries in the forest, you can find these plants
Anga urukka thae select pannu, oru thaviyavari kondu vandita, adu ivanukku podichiruke, adu salesai, ippon alla veetla vandhu ukkandurukka, adu engiyo urundharu
A man had found it from the forest and brought it for sale and somebody has brought it and now it is in the house, it was found elsewhere once
Namai ippon pineapple la, inga vandhu kas kuuduthu vangaro
We buy pineapples
Ningal Kerala la chaladangalukku ponninrue, fence edhada, adu oru mulchidi, analam fence kutha edhavichu urukka, pineapple ochirukka, aadugidu tapunu vandhara kudada, manushan chadharana thandira kudada, edhavichu urkka, mulchidi kutha edhavichu urukka
In Kerala, you find certain houses which are being fenced with a pineapple tree
Ippu ningal paathinkana, inga ochirukkare crotons la, ningal vangi vangi, vetti vittu, elam kaattu chedigal da, anadu inga vandhu ippon rate koodichu, adu bole, naamui engiyo kadandho, inge thukittu vandha perakadha namukke visheshithavarkal, unne visheshithavanai maantinadhe ede, indha kribayum, kristavam
The crotons which you are growing at your home, which has, which is of a great value, was once wild plants which were found in the forest, even so, we were found elsewhere, the Lord has brought us here and made us differ from the other
Ananal than Bible jollukkare, katturudiyai aalayathil mulaitthavarkal nusolala, vedikke pattavarkal nusolala, ensiyade urukke, naatappattavarkal
The Bible does not say we are sprouted in the house of the Lord or we are sown in the house of the Lord, we are planted in the house of the Lord
Katturudiyai aalayanna, anga petthi devunudai petti urukku
If it is the house of the Lord, the ark of the Lord is there
Katturudiyai aalayanna, anga nyayapramana puustoga urukku
There is the book of the law in the house of God
Katturudiyai aalayanna, anga aaradanai urukku
There is a worship in the house of the Lord
Katturudiyai aalayunthu na, katturudiyai pokisha urukku
There is a treasure in the house of the Lord
Katturudiyai aalayunthu na, katturudiyai naamur urukku
The name of the Lord is found in the temple of God
Katturudiyai naamur, katturudiyai aalayunthu na, anga uyya karangal urpada
The servants of God have found in the house of the Lord
Ananal, inge jollukke, katturudiyai aalayathil, naunne naatii ochirukkane solukkara
But here it is said, the Lord says, "I have planted you in the house of God"
Ipodi devan namai visheshithavarkal aakai manadilla vaythu, indha sabaila unne naatii urukkare
Likewise, the Lord has had us specially in his mind and has planted us in the church
Eppudi ellathin kondu naatii urukkara
As he brought all of us and planted us
Unne yin ney, eppudi endhavil, namai endhaviruchamaha naattukkare
As what tree has the Lord planted us in his house
Adhala naam indha naatkilla velengi kollavendhi da avasiya
This is what we need to understand these days
Ah, ippu paranga, samibha kalama, irukkare karuvela maratham, mottathim podunka choli haikoth aadhrakkuudutha
In the recent times
Seemek karuvela marangal alla, mulumarathal allam podunka solutha
He is asked to pluck out all the thorny bushes around
Appan naamam oru mulumarama arunda, oru time varumuludhu namalaiyin sabai kulalarunda, kuda ensiyave, puddingi veliyapodasoluvaa
So if we are a thorny tree, then at one time, the Lord will ask us to be plucked out of the church and cast out
Adhunudai mudhuvisuttirikke pottuvadhenrue, ibraer aaramadikarathal na vaasikkara
Hebrews chapter 6 says, "The end of it will be burnt with fire"
Adikkidi malai bheegurade
Often it is raining
Ananal adu kudithu tanakki, eetha payirai kuuduthal, adu aasirvadam perum
If it will bring forth the herbs having drunk of the water, it will bring blessing
Mulchidiyai kuuduthal, adu sabikka pattadhu enrue, ibraer aar, yel, ettu vasanangalila parkalam
Hebrews chapter 6, verses 7 and 8 says, "If it will bring forth thorns and bryce, it is cursed"
Ingay katturudiyai aalayathil naatappattavarkal
Those who planted in the house of God
Kattar unne yin ney sabailai eppudi naattukkare
How has the Lord planted you and me in the house of God?
Ennagamum, 24 madikaram, aaravasanam
Numbers chapter 24, verse 6
Ennagamum, 24 aar
Amigal paravi pogra, aargalipolavum, nadiyorathrillu, thotthugalipolavum, kattar naatine, sandhana marangalipolavum
Kattar naatina sandhana marangal
As the trees of line aloes which the Lord had planted
Aandavu indha sabailai, unne yin ney, oru sandhana maramaha naattukkare
The Lord has planted you and me as a line alu tree in the house of God
Sandhana marangala, ningal paladeshangal, roadliyai pakala, veetliyai pakala
You can find the sandalwood trees in various countries on the roads, even in the houses
Adu pathavunne sandhana maranu, namakal, namala mara, aalangalukka kandupidiyake, teriyade
People like us do not know to easily spot out that tree
Adu pathavunne, appu remba, pala pala pa, alaha, naandhan sandhana, appu ney veliyasolukkare, namukke teriyade
It will not give an appearance which is glittering to find out that it is a sandalwood tree
Anaa, adu viverandhirinjavulukka, kandupidiyakumuriyam
Those who have an understanding about it will easily spot it out
Monaar side la ningal ponninrue
If you go to the side of Mona
Roadliyai urk
On the roads you can find
Anadal, sandhana maranu namukke teriyade
But we do not know it is this tree
Anadal, kandupidiyinrue, oru vali urk
There is one way to find out
Govarman enna punnirukka
What has the government done?
Roadla, anna maranikkarudhala, adu pathukakarudhukke, fulla, oru kambi veli pottu, adu vayara varike, vettraadha, vettamudiyadha, alavula ketty ochiruk
The government has put a barbed wire fence around each tree that no one will hew it out
Appu ney enna artha?
What does that mean?
Indha mara enna de? Pakkaduka alagurukkaade, remba, pala pala pa urkkaade, remba, presithama urkkaade, anaa, adukkula oru vasana maranjiruk
It is not beautiful to look at, it does not have a smell or fragrance out of the tree, but there is something which is, which is inward built in it
Adeneerathal, andha vasanai, oru kurikke patta valachikke pinbu da, adu veliyavaro
It has a fragrance which will be brought out only after a particular growth
Ningal sandhana mara aalayalku ningal ponninrue
We go to the places where there are, this sandalwood is being hewn out
Ah, chala companygal indha, namudaiyai taminalathal kudai urk
Even in Tamil Nadu, there are certain companies
Andha sandhathala, andha oru essence, oru edathal eduthu ningal ochiginrue, ningal yattana tripu kaluvunala ensiyade, andha smell, poorudhala, appu ye, ulapadinchurudhu, andha oru drops, abvalavu manam, undu
If you take the sap out of the sandalwood tree and keep it, how much of a time you wash your hands, you cannot take out the fragrance out of your hands because it is so smelling
Indha sabailai namai, katturudiyai aalayathil naman naattundhinookam, katturudai naamam mayimikka, vasanai viisakudiyavu aalke ka
The purpose for which the Lord has brought us and planted us in the house of God is that, for the glory of the name of the Lord, that we should bring forth a good fragrance unto the Lord
Adhavunga manasal eliduvichigal
You should write it in your minds
Sandhathinudaiyai nokkam, vasanai
The purpose for the alu tree is to bring forth fragrance
Ni vasanavisanunna, alaha arunda vasanavisamudiyade, ni sandhana maramaha maranu
If you are to give forth a good fragrance, it is not because you are beautiful you can bring forth a fragrance, but only if you are a sandalwood tree, you can bring forth a fragrance
Adu enga naatnal, andha vasanam undu
Wherever it is planted, there is a fragrance
Adu endhatal irundhal, adukka vasanam undu
Wherever it is found, there is a fragrance
Varishingal kooda kooda, adhumudai vasanai koodumethavara, korayave korayade
As years pass by, only the fragrance will increase, it will not decrease
Valara valara, adhumudai rate kooda
As it grows, its rates also increases
Adu enna size valarudo, yattana varisham koodudo, andha alavu adhumudai madhipukoodinadu
The number of years, it increases the number of the size that it grows, to that extended value also is well increased
Katturindha sabailai unna ochirukkade, katturudai naamam mayimikka, enbadu ningal velengi kollam
You should understand, the Lord has kept you in this church, it is for the glory of the name of the Lord
Adu daan devunudai thittam
That is the plan of God
Enneyo, ungalayu sabaila ochirukkare, appu ney, oru vappam maramaha alla
If God has set you and me in the church, it is not as a name tree
Ilavut, oru mulu, oru kichili maramaha alla
Or not as an apple tree
Oru velan vappamathal, adhiga nela urkavendum
Perhaps because of the name tree, there is shade
Adukke kuduma urkavendum
There is also culture, there is a pool
Nala oxygen varala
You have oxygen
Ippudila, ulakathal, bodisolukkara
Worldly, they will speak like this
Unne indha sabaiki nela vaykala, unne indha sabailai, kattar, oru vasanai porulaga, thiraviyamaha unne maatvarumbukare
The Lord has not kept you as a shadow or a shade in this church, but the Lord has made you as a fragrance or a material giving order in the church
Ungal yattanavir, moollamai, aandhode naamam mayimipadukkare
Through how many of you of the Lord are glorified?
Ungal yattanavir, kattari, uyertakudiyavu aalke, vallukkari
How many of you living life whereby you exalt the Lord?
Yakobu oru edathal chonnan
Jacob in one place said
Sanadaya sondha pillagali pathu chonnan
Looking at his own children, he said
Ungalala, ya vasanakettupoyichin sol
My odor or my fragrance is lost because of you
Panirundhu, padimundru pillagal irundhanak
He had thirteen children
Ananal, avunukke, orayorupillain moollamaha da vasanakadachidhu, mattapaniirundhu pillagal moollamaha vasanakadakala
Only one among the thirteen brought forth a good fragrance, remaining twelve did not bring him a good fragrance
Adi ahamum, 34, 35, ningal indha desathil, enndri vasanayekiduthu vittiruk
Exodus chapter 30, Genesis chapter 30, verse 34
Appadu yakobu simiyoniyam leeviyam parthu, indha desathil kudirukre, kanaaniyar edathlo, persyar edathlo, en vasanayi ningal keditthidinali, enakalagapanniigal
En vasanayi ningal keditthu vittiruk
Thou hast made my odor or fragrance to low
Naan oru devunudai manidhan enrue, payari ningal keditthu vittiruk
You have made me lose that I am a man of God
Ungadai pillagal, ungalai vasanayekidukkalam
Your children might make you lose your savour
Vedam enna jollukkare
What does the Bible say?
Evadu alaha, oru perfume sa, evadu vasanivelsakudiyavu, oru perfume sa idundhalo
How much of a fragrance a perfume might be?
Anadal, Bible enna jollukkare
What does the Bible say?
Oru ee poi, adhile ulundhu setupochinna
If a fly will go and die in the apothecary
Prasangipattamadikaram, modhalaavasanam
Ecclesiastes 6, chapter 10, verse 1
Sette eeikal, thailakaranudaiyai parivala thailathi, naari kettupoguppanam, yaanathilum, ganathilum, peer pettavani, sorpa madhiiinamam, appadiyaseyum
Oru ee ulundhu, andha sentukkula ulundrichina, adhovu, andha senteenaido, appudi trippai, naari perum
If a dead, if a fly will fall into that ointment and die, with that it will be stinking
Adu bole, kattar unne yin ney, sandhana viruchamaha vasanavisukumidiyavechirukkare, anasorpa madhiiinangal, patthu pisagukparada, oru chinnavu, sadhana, cheepanavu, chala sinna sbavangala, namudaiyai, life urdai, mayimiyapoyidhu
The Lord has kept you, you and me as those which bring forth a good fragrance, but little folly will make us lose our glory
Oru peechi, oru siripu, oru velayattu, oru tavarana, oru munnu udarno, namudai vasanayekiduthuruk
Our talk, our smile, or what, when we do things in a jolly way, that which we do wrongly will make us lose our savour
Yakobu chollukka, thanudai pillagal nimitho, en vasanai kettuponudham solukkara
Jacob says, "Because of my children, I have lost my savour"
Yeah, enna vasanake, eppudi kettichu?
How did he make him stink?
Deanal, oora suttunadhanala vandhakkeedu
Because Dinah went to wander through the land, he lost the savour
Oru vitthiyasamana dressa pottukidu
She wore a different dress
Oru deviukkutukku porambaha
It is contrary to divinity
Ellar like pandramari nandhadana
Because she walked away being liked by other others
Adu andhreka, udai aalke, oru priya thingai kondu vandadu
That brought an evil in her life
Adu kadayisi la, oru priya sandhadiyai alithu vittadu
Finally, it brought destruction to a great seed or a generation
Adhala, yakobin pillagal, kolaykarakal akam mari
Because of which the children of Jacob became murderers
Eppudi urukku ningal yossuparanga
Just imagine how that could be
Indha edathal nandhadu, yakobin vasanayekiduponadu
This incident made the savour of Jacob to stink
Ningal ennagam 24, vaasichu pathadu, yakobinudai sandhadiyappatti chonnava, oru varthai
Numbers chapter 24 speaks about the word which refers to the seed or the generation of Jacob
Yakobey, un vasasthalangalum, isravale, un koodaargalum, yavadu alahaanavigalnu chollidu, than krila, indha subject varadu, avan kattar naatina sandhana virucham
After speaking about Jacob, about his habitation and about Israel and about his houses, it speaks of this trees which are being planted by the Lord
Anadal, ippa sandhana viruchanara arambithu vittadu
But now this sandalwood tree is starting to stink
Eppudi urukku ningal paranga
Just imagine how that would be
Naam devunudaiyai vasanavisakudiyamudiyaga, devunudai naamathukaha, naam thirindhakappattavarkal
We are chosen for the name of the Lord that we may bring forth a good fragrance
Vedam enna jollukkare
What does the Bible say?
Unna tha paathu, mondru, aarla, vasanai viisi varugre, ivar yaar, yarandhal, aandavu suganda vasanai viisakudiyavu, oru nabar
Song of Solomon, chapter 3, verse 6, he says, "Who is he? Who comes bringing forth a good fragrance?" Because God is one who brings forth a good fragrance
Adukka, namu ellaru sentu pottu varununna alla
That does not mean we should use perfumes
Avikuruyi aalke la vandhittha perake
After coming to the spiritual life
Ulakavasanyay naam peshukkare
We do not speak of the perfume of this world
Devan namai sandhana viruchamai sabaila vaythurukkara
God has kept us as a tree of line aloes in the church
Ni katturudiyai aalayathil naatappattavan
You are planted in the house of God
Devunudai thotthatil naatappattavan
You are planted in the garden of the Lord
Unne naatina the devan
It is God who planted you
Innigal gudda sabaila ayyarakannakana janangal urpada
There are thousands of people in the church today
Oru time varumuludhu, indha, konya anegar urukkamata
At one particular time, many will leave the church
Adu pinmattama?
Is that backsliding?
Adu enna sambhavitadu?
What has happened then?
Bible jollukkare, en paramipidavinal, nadappadada, naatrala, veeroodu, puddungappadum
The Bible says, "That which is not planted by my heavenly Father shall be uprooted"
Matthi, padinindhu, padimundru, adu suttikaattukare
Matthew 15, 13 points out to this
Ennudaiyai pidavinal, naatappadada, paramipidavinal, naatappadada, naatchugal allam, veeroodu, puddungappadakudiyavu, oru nairavaro, appan da, unmayana kristavarkal yaar, sabai kahani, irkara, sandhana viruchingal yedu, enbadu kandupidiyake, yel
Every plant which my heavenly Father has not planted shall be rooted up, only then we will find out who are the true Christians, who are those sandalwood trees planted by the Lord
Ningal paranga, sandhana viruchan, kandadathal allam valaradu
These sandal trees will not grow as and when we find
Adu sadhana edathal allam valaradu
It will not be found in common places
Adukku valachikya, adukku oru climate thaav
There is a particular climate needed for its growth
Ah, adu bole, avikuruyi, even kandadathal, yavadu
The spiritual people cannot grow in every place
Sariyana sabaila, daan unnal, valaravudhi
Only in a proper church, they can grow
Adu enna suganda vasanayi, suganda vasanayin urukke
Among the fragrance, there is also called a sweet fragrance
Ingay urukkare, ellar urkame, oru fragrance pidiyuk
Each of you have your own likes about these perfumes or fragrance
Appudi dana? Appudi dana?
Isn't that true?
Ungal vedla vangi ochirupingala, room freshener, air freshener, idhala vangi ochirupiyi, adhile vathinkana, oru fragrance poturupaa, adhile ungalukke, oru velan ningal maliyavu, vitta kuda, adu vittamudiyade, idhila vangi ochirupayi
You might have the room freshener or the air freshener at your homes, you might have a particular like for a particular fragrance
Appudi dana? Namalal, poo kala vittutanga, anaplastic poo kuda vikam, vittamudiyama, bokke mari, veetla, nalajji tonga vitturukangi, yappudi aavu, adu, plastic ruvathila, veetlakal, vandhrununna, ungalakas
Our people
Appudi illa, indha slide liyadu, thalile nijikunna, side, kutikinno, adhiliyadu, rendu poo vakkinno, than pillagalukke, adu plastic da, kalathuka aliyadada
They want to wear these flowers, at least in the form of the plastic flowers or at least in their clips which they have put for their children
Appudi dana? Yappudiyo namukke, chala fragrance pidiyadu
Somehow we want some fragrance
Ananal, aandavu, aandavu kupidiyavu, vasanai enna?
But which is that fragrance which the Lord likes
Yes, ayah, 11 madikaram, Monaavasanatha parukumbadu
Isaiah chapter 11, verse 3
Kattarukku bayappadhal, averukku uganda vasanayaa urukku
Aandavukku bayappadhal, averukku uganda daana oru vasanai
So fearing the Lord is a sweet fragrance unto the Lord
Avar oru suganda vasanayevirmuradhu chonnan, adu onakkulum, yannakkulum, urukkara daana, andha sanjana viruchitthin vasanayagi, kattarukku bayappadukkara, bayam
If the Lord desires a sweet fragrance, that is the fear of the Lord which is found in you and me
कत्तर के बयपड़दले न्यानत्तिन आरंभ
The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom
कत्तर के बयपड़दरा मनिदन तान कत्तर तेड़ीकुंडे अवर
The Lord is seeking for a man who would fear the Lord
नी देवन के अबलो बयपड़दरा
How much do you fear God?
देवन के अबलो नी किल्पटिकरा
How much are you obedient to the Lord?
नींग वेदतले नींग पार्कुम बड़
If you consider in the Bible
नोवा विन कालत्तिल भूमि अलिकपड़दरद विलकम अलिकपड़दरद
During the days of Noah the earth was destroyed
मुलुरुमा हलिंजे ओर पुदिय संदति उरुवाकर
The whole world was destroyed and there was a new generation formed
वेलिया वंद बड़ नोवा बलियाटा
After having come out of the ark Noah offered a sacrifice
देवन अंद सुगंध वासनी मुहर्दा
The Lord smelled the sweet savor
अब्रतन एन अर्थ
What does it mean?
कत्तर विरुम्बरा सुगंध वासनी एन बादे ओन्ड्र कत्तर के बयपड़दरा बय इरंडा अवधि ओन्नुड़िया विश्वासमागिया बली बानबलियाई वार्कपड़दरा तियाकमुल्ला ओर प्रदिष्टि उल्लो ओर वाल्क
So the sweet smelling savor which the Lord desires is your offering of your faith which is to offer yourself as a drink offering
अप्पुड़ियाल नम इंदवर सभैले नाट्ठा पट्टे कत्तर डिया लायत्र नाट्ठा पट्टे यथाने वरणगलाई विट्टा
So how many years have passed by being planted in the house of God?
इंदिकिन नम्मुड़िया वाल्क एपुड़िया रुकर
How is our life today?
नम्मु कुरितु विलकम मिन्न पेसकर
What does the world speak about today?
नम्मु कुड़म मिन्न पेसकर
What does your family speak about?
नम्मु कुड़म मिन्न पेसकर
What does the talk about you among your friends?
इवन नम्मुड़िया चर्चल नम्मु पति साची एन
What is our testimony in the church?
परलोग नम्मु कुरितु एन साची कुड़कर
What does heaven testify about us?
इद्दा रम्मु मुखियम आनद परियम आन
The Lord wants that is very important
कत्तर उने संधन विरचमा का सभैल वेतरकर
The Lord has placed you as a sandal tree in the house of God
नी इंद सभैके नी ओर संधन विरच
You are a sandal tree in the church
संधन विरचित्तिल रम्मा अलाहाना पूकल कड़या
There are no beautiful flowers in the tree
रम्मा अलाहाना परिया पह लेगल कड़या
There are no beautiful leaves in the tree
अंद मारता पात ओड़ने ओर अट्रैक्टिव रुकर अंद तन्मे कड़या
The tree does not give an attractive appearance
अना अदि वालर वालर अदि कूले ओर सुगंध वासनी उरुवायीकुंडे वाल
But as it grows higher and higher there is a sweet savor or a fragrance which is formed in the tree
अनाल तान इंद मार्क को वोंगल विलकम आडमरत्त को तुक्कल मुड़िया
That is why this religion does not agree with the worldly dawning
इदि वेंडा
No to this, no to that
इदि विट्र
Forsake them
इदि कुप
This is just
इदि नस्त
This is loss
इदि विट्टु कुड़त्र
Just forego with it
कांदु पैड
Just cast them away
सगिचिक
You endure
नस्तत यथुक
You take the loss
इदिल नांग सोलिकुड़कर कारणो विलकम प्रकारम पात इदल्लामे बाईतीकर
We teach you all this but in the worldly manner this is foolishness
अना बाइबल एन सोलिकर
What does the Bible say?
बाईतियमा के तोंडुकर प्रसंकतिनाले विश्वासीगले रचिके देवन के प्रियमाइत
It was pleasing to God to save them who are believers through the preaching which was as foolishness
इन्ना पाई इब्बिल लम प्रसंगम ट्रांग अब्रिमिंग अना अजाम प्रसंग
You would say what are they preaching is how they preach but that is the message
ओन्नु कुरिंदीर ओन्ना मधिकारा इरुवती ओर वासनतले इदि तेलीवा के चोला पटरकर
First Corinthians chapter 1 verse 21 gives us a clear understanding एप्पुड़ियानिल देव न्यानत्त केट्टबड़ी विलकम आनद सुया न्यानत्राले देवनी अरियादरक्यल बाईतियमा के तोंडुकर प्रसंगतिनाले विश्वासीगले रचिके देवन के प्रियमाइत
इंद प्रसंग
Which is that preaching?
Hallelujah, amen अब्रिंगर प्रसंग अल्लाह
It is not a message whereby we say hallelujah, amen
अल्लार्क कई तटो बेल्लार अब्रिंगलान चोलर अल्लाह नम्मु के दल्लील अल्लाह कड़य
We do not have the work of saying let us all clap our hands
इन्ना नम्मु प्रसंग एन दे
What is our message?
सिलुवे सुमप आया
You bear the cross
अडिचा अडिवाइंग कुलवाया
If you are being smitten take of the beating
विट्र ओर मेल तोरंग कोप्ता ना रंडु मेल तोरंपो ओन्न कट्टा ना रंडे इन कुड़त्र इब्बिल नम्मु चोलर इदि कैकम्बो वोंगल कु विद्यासम आर्को अना बाइबल चोलकर बाईतियमाइ तोंडुकर प्रसंकतिनाले विश्वासीगले रचिके देवन के प्रियमाइत
If you are asked to go one mile you have to go two miles and so on this is what we preach But the Bible says it pleased God by the foolishness of preaching to save them that believe
ओर चर्चल चंदन मरता वच्चे वालत्ता
They brought a sandal tree in the church
ओर फैथमल वालत्ता
They grew it in the faith home
अदि वालंदा मारी वालंदची कांझमारी कांझिर
But it grew as it was growing and finally it withered away
अदि कंद ऊरुण डिया क्लाइमेट एन सीमा टेनिस ओतुकम अटेन
The climate did not agree with the tree
ओर आविकुरी वन भूमि कुरी अट्रल कुंडुविविटा वोंगल को तुर वेले कुड़ा विट्टु सोत्रमंतु ओड़िवंदर
If you take a spiritual man to an earthly place he will not get set in that circumstance He will even forsake his job and can't run away
एनक अंद अट्रल परिसूत वांगुड़े आइके मेल अदवड़ा नच तुपरुद नलदु वेले विट्टु वंद विश्वासीगल नारक
There are believers who have even lost their job because there is no holiness there and it is better they die
अरम्यानस सम्बरत विट्टु ओड़िवंदर अब्रिम नम्मु सोल
We would say
अना अवन के इंद प्रसंगतिनाले अवन रचिके देवन के सितमाइ
We would say they have left go of such a good earning and come away But it was the will of God to save him through this preaching
आविकुरी वाल्क एल निंगल देवन के वासनी विसकुड़ियुलाई मारवे
In your spiritual life you should bring forth a good fragrance to the Lord
ओन्डे पेच ओन्डे निन्ने ओन्डे तोटमो ओन्डे उडयो ओन्डे नडयो ओन्डे उक्कारलो एलंद्रकलो ओन्डे प्रसंगमो ओन्डे पाटो ओन्डे ओरशिपो ओन्डे देवीगमो एल्लाम देवन के महिमया स्वासनया कमारवे
Your walk, your talk or the wearing of your apparel Or your downsitting or your uprising, your worship, your song, your message whatever it might be It should be sweet giving for the sweet fragrance under the Lord
संगीत 52 एट्टे पार्कुम बड़
Coming to Psalms 52 verse 8
अंगे तावीर तन्ने पति एन चोलकर
What does David say about himself?
नांकत्तर डिया लायत्र एपुड़िया रुकर तन्ने पति सोलकर
He mentions about himself as to how he is in the house of God नानो देवरड़ी आलयत्तिल पच्चयान ओलिव मरते पोल इरक्रे
एब्रित तन्ने पति अवे अरम्यान ओर साच
What a beautiful testimony he gives about himself
नान आलयत्र ना इरकर
I am also in the house of God
अना नान आलयत्र एपुड़िया रुकर
But how am I in the house of God?
कांझु गोन गरिकी पोन ओर आल अर्कन ना एपुड़िया रुक
Am I like a dry tree in the house of God?
नी कत्तर डिया सभैल एपुड़िया रुकर
What is your state in the church of God?
ओन्डे तन्ने पट्टे साची एन
What is your personal testimony?
इत्तन वर्ष इंद सभैल नी एक्सपीरियंस आयर रुक ओन्डुड़िया इंद्रिया काले पदिनोर मनी उडे नलवरम एन
What you have so many years experience in the church what is your state at 11 o'clock in this morning?
नांकांझु कांझु तलत्तिकटेर के अप्पा तन्ने विटर कुंज्या पच्चय वरदि तिरिपि प्रश्न वंदो ने अब्रिकांझर एब्रित वोंग स्टेटमेंट एब्रित
What is your statement? Do you say I often become dry and wither away and often I am being watered And it will become little green and again I dry away is that your statement?
अना अवे एन सोलर
What does he say?
नानो देवनड़ी आलयत्तिल नन पच्चयान ओलिव मरते पोल रुक
But I am like a green olive tree in the house of God
अवन सभैल कत्तर ओलिव मरमा का वेतरकर
The Lord had set him as an olive tree in the house of God
ओलिव मरम अभिषेकते कांड पिक
The olive tree speaks of the anointing
अब्रतन सगरिया नाला मधिकारा कडेसी वसनते पदिनांगा वसनते पार्कुम बड़
Zechariah chapter 4 and verse 14
इवरगल सर्व लोगत्तकुम आंडवर आयिरकर अवरकुम मुन्बाख निरकर अभिषेकम पेट्टवर्ग
These are the anointed ones which stand before the Lord of the whole earth
आविकुरी वाल्क एल वंदित पर
After coming to the spiritual life
नी इंद सभैल ओन्नु नी संधन विरचमा अर्कन इल्लाव्तनी ओलिव मरमा अर्कन
Either you should be a sandal tree in the church or an olive tree in the church
सभैल अभिषेकम पेट्टो ओर सभैया कनमारवे
We should become an anointed group in the church
वोंगल यार काव अभिषेक इल्ला विटाल निंगल कोलुम इल्ल एन र अर्थ
If any of you are lacking the anointing it means you have lost the fatness
ओर वेल निंग चर्च बिलिवर आकर
Maybe you are a believer of the church
इंद सभैनुड़िया रम्मा अधिक वोत्तास उल्लव लाकर इरकल
You might be of great support and help to the church
नी पच्चयान ओलिव मरमा इरकन ना नानो आंडवर विरुम्बर
But I and the Lord desire that you should be a green olive tree
अदा रम्मु मुखियम आनद
That is very important
कत्तर नद वट्र ओन्ने वाचिते नी कांझु बोय ओन्नु मिलामो ओंझु बोन ओन्नु मिलामर्दे ना ओन्ने वेत्ति इंद सभैल एरादु प्रयोजन अर्क
If the Lord has set you here and you have become dry and of nothing What is the profit of you being in the church?
ओर विडल पुरुष एरकर नोचिक
Suppose there is a husband of the house
मनवी एरकन नोचिक
Or the wife
इल्ल पुल्लेगल रुकन नोचिक
Or there are children
एल्लाम कोमा स्टेजल नद एब्रित
If all of them are in the coma stage what is the state then?
वोंग पुरुष गोमल अब्रितर ना एब्रित
If your husband is in the coma stage what is your state?
मनवी कोमल अर्न ना एन विंग
Or your wife
बेर ओर आल कल्याण कटिको अब्रिंग
Do you think we will marry someone else?
एब्रित वेलस इदि नम्मु तेरील
I do not know how your brain will work
योशु पारिंग
You can imagine
कत्तर सभैल ओन्ने पच्चयान ओलिव मरमा का विक्या
God desires to set you as a green olive tree in the house of God What does that mean?
एप्पुड़िया अभिषेकत्तिल उल्लव नाक नी इरकन
You should be always filled with the anointing
ओलिव मरत्तिल के रंडु तन्मे रुक
There are two attributes of an olive tree
नींग पारिंगे इंद ओलिव एन ईपर रम्मा अधिकमा सेल्स आगद
The olive oil is on greatest sale now
अदुबोल पात रम्मा अलाहाना मरमल अल्लाह कड़य
It is a lot of a beautiful appearance
अना अदि कुल्लू ओर जीवन विच रुक
But there is life in the tree
अंद ओलिव एन ईया बाइबल चोलकर अंद ओलिव मरत्त पति अदि कोलुमय एन द सोलकर
The Bible calls about the olive tree the olive oil is of fatness
अब्रतन न्यायाधिपतिगल ओन्बदा मधिकारा ओन्बदा वसन
Judges chapter 9 verse 9 अदरक ओलिव मरम देवरगल मनुष्यर पुगलगरे एनिलुले एन कोलुमय नान विट मरंगले आरसाला पोविन
देवरगलुम मनिदरगलुम पुगलगर कोलुमय
My fatness whereby they honor God and man
अदि दान नमकुल रुकर ओर विशेषित अभिषेक
There is a special anointing that is found within us
इंद पुदियर पाट नमकुल रुकर अभिषेक वंद देवरगल देव तूदरगल अदितदा के मनिदरगल अनि अभिषेकम पेट्टोन अप्पो देवन नोनोड़ दुकर
The anointing that we possess in the New Testament period is that the angels of God God and also men will honor us through the fatness that is in us
अभिषेकम पेट्टोन ओर विशेषित
Those who are anointed are special
अभिषेक अंदा इंद मार्क तन्दी ओन्डे कोलुमय
Anointing is the fatness of the religion that you have
एब्लो अभिषेक ओनकुल रुक अब्लो नी कोलुमय उल्लव नाक रुक
The more and more you are anointed to that extent you are fat
एब्लो अभिषेक रुक अब्लो वोनकुल पच्चय तन्मे रुक
The more you are being anointed to that extent you have the green
अना कत्तर डिया लायत्र ओलिव मरन चोला मै कुंज्या विद्यास पट्टी चोलर
He does not say I am just an olive tree in the house of God
अब्रतन कनान कत्तर डिया समुगतले ओर संधन विरचन चोन मारी नान कत्तर डिया समुगतले नान पच्च ओलिव मरमा इरक्रे चोल अदि को ओर पाइंट सोलर नान एब्रिब एब्रिब बट्ट ओलिव मर पच्चयान ओलिव मर
He does not say I am just the olive tree in the house of God He makes mention that he is a green olive tree in the house of God
ओन्डे अभिषेक ओन्डे कोलुमय कुरया कुड़ा
Your anointing your fatness should not decrease
अभिषेकम परम्बुल नाम ओर अल्लव पेट्टुकोट नाल कुनाल अंद अभिषेकत्तिल उल्लान मनुष्य नाल कुनाल बेलपड़वे
At first when we receive the anointing we receive it to a particular extent But day by day our inner man should be strengthened
ओर सल अन्य बस पेसुवांग मुप्पत वर्षत्तिक मुन्नाल पेट्टर बेसित रम्मा दि सभैल अवल अवल वरुण केट्टा अदमन पड़ामा पन्नी विच
Certain people will speak with the unknown tongues They would speak the same tongues which they received thirty years back And all those who hear it will speak the same
तवर
That is wrong
बाइबल एन सोलकर
What does the Bible say?
अवरगल नवमान बास्यगले पेसुवार
They will speak with new tongues
अप्पो अभिषेकत्तिल एन एरके तित मून्र ऐंदिन्बडी परिसूत आवीन पुदिदाग दलिनाल वोंगल रचिकर
According to Titus 3:5 he saves you by the renewing of the Holy Ghost
ओर बयन बयन पति टीचर विड के नोट कुड़तु विटर Parents कुट्टुवांग
The teacher sent a note about the son to bring his parents
अप्पो वंद अवंग पेरेंट वंद
The parents came
अवंग ओर अल्लव पटिका दंग पाव पट्टो
They were a kind of illiterate people
वोंग बयन इंग्लिशल तेरम अटम्पोल तेरीद
They said your son would not pass the English subject
रम्मु डल्ला रुक
He is very dull headed
ओन्नु में तरल
He does not know anything
ओन्नु तेरिया बयन पोइ इंग्लिश चाट वुटिंग
He is a dumb and dull headed person
एन ना अब्रिसोलरिंग डेली यंग बयन इंग्लिश बयंगरमा पटिच विडल अवं पटिकर द केट्टी यनक के इंग्लिश तेरिंज बोजिन सोन
The father said what do you say like this my son is learning English every day Hearing him I am also speaking in English
ओन्ने टीचर काचिनी मंस यन्ना बयन स्कूल ओन्नु उर्पड़िया पटिकले विडल बयंगरमा पटिकर
The teacher was amazed because the child does not learn very English
अब्रित यन्ना इंग्लिश पटिच तय अब्रिन कट्टा टीचर कट्टा
The teacher asked the boy
अट्टा पट्टन अंद तापन एबीसीडी इरुतारी सोलिमुच यन्ना अट्टा समय यंग बयन डेली पटिकर नाने कट्टुकट्ट नी एन ए अब्रिसोलर
The father
पटिच द एन दे पुल्ला पटिच द डेली एत तम पटिच एबीसीडी द अदे मारी नम्मा अलंगलुम मुप्पत्रण्ड वर्षत्तिक मुन्नाल उल्लान या बस पेसी अन्न पात ओड़ने एल्लार्क जोली इव पो पेस पराम पारी इद तम पेसुवाम
Likewise even our people will speak the same unknown tongues
पुदिपिक पड़ा पच्चय इल्लाद ओलिव मरंगलाक सभैल रुक डेली नी पुदिदाग कत्तर ओड़ पेसन
We should not be like the olive trees which are not renewed in the anointing We should be like the green olive tree every day you should speak with new tongues
डेली एस वे एस वे नकल नाटकल आगा आगा अंद कोलंद एन सी आरमिक मदल्ला परियास ओदर अदि के पर एन दे
As days pass
एसआया इरुतत एन सोलिकु पदिनोल परियास ओदर गलिनालो ओर कोलंद पेस आरमिक मोद एब्रिबेस
that he spoke with unknown tongues
Kattarade varthe purinjigunno
you should understand the word of the Lord
satthiyata purinjigunno
understand the truth
nee pesarath thappu kuda aviyanor onadu pesidipar nee ida pootu maikil katidipar
you will what you speak the spirit of the Lord is speaking with you but you are speaking with that
teliva neerukana avi kulla
you have to be clear in your spirits
andhavi naale pagutthari talu unakka thavai
you should have to discern in the spirits
avada innelandha baadi vara anyi basa pesamani neenikara
I think half of you will stop speaking with unknown tongues now
enathal pesinam thappu pesiduva man
will I speak wrongly?
apadiyala
it is not so
aviyanor onakulla correcta pesararana onakulla elai paradu samadhanava nadiyapola vadukite
if the spirit of the Lord is speaking rightly from within you you will have rest and peace flowing as a river
ah chellal avilaan motha alugiranga yaar alugira aviyanor onakulla arundakannir vettirare
some will weep as they get filled in the spirit who is weeping the spirit of the Lord is weeping from within you
orisalal vaayath tharakamataan thidinupathina bayangarama alugidu katiporadi jamunua aviyanor vakka karangada perumuchuvala onakulla arundanisigirare vinnapamunugirare
some will not open their mouth where all of a sudden they will shout and make loud noise and weep it is the spirit of the Lord is speaking
naano devanade aaleyathil pachayana olive marabola rukkara
but I am like a green olive tree in the house of God
adukkataan kathiruputha vachirukkara onne kollumayi adigirikey
for which we have the taring meeting you have to increase your fatness
vedanavara vandinga nathipaninjuvarayu iruvavandenga
how many of you attended the tarring meeting?
appa enga kolluma irukonni pachayana olive marama
are you a green olive tree how can you have the fatness?
yosjuvaranga
you can imagine?
ongeluk business mukiyam panam mukiyam velam mukiyam ongeluk pair epugal mukiyam ellam ongeluk ayyatadu business ojichigiga ana nee kattarade aaleyathile pachayana olive maramai naatapatavan
for you your business your money or your work everything is important you have hundred and one work to be done but you are a green olive tree planted in the house of God
luke alathinu suvishesham padimoonamadigara ariyeluyuttu unbadu vasanangali ilparukumbadu
luke's cosmopled chapter thirteen verses six seven and eight
angai trachethothatile naraappadha sabaila naatapattho ratthimarathai parkaram
we read about a fig tree which was planted in the church
adavetta cholugirare
it was being it was ours to be cut out
idinamakallargu terindja oru subject
this is a subject we all know
idu oru atthimara
it is a fig tree
nee indha sabaila naatapattho oru aal
you are planted in the church
mathi 21 22 padukumbadu oru atthimarathai yesu sabithada agatholla patrakrathade
matthew twenty one verse twenty six we read Jesus cursed a fig tree
adhala yelegal irundadu analkanigal illai
there were leaves but there were no fruits
atthimarathinudhe nokkam danienna
what is the purpose of a fig tree?
nyayadi padigal unbadamadigaram padinora vasanathai parkumbadu
judges chapter nine verse eleven adakati maram naanin madurathayum enarkaniyivittu
enudaya madurathayum enudayenarkaniyin anvada mattain
I will not forsake my sweetness and my good fruit
atthimarathuku devan rendu thanme vachirukkara
two attributes of a fig tree
ondru maduram
one is sweetness
machtrundranthkani
another is a good fruit
indhu irundu daasabaila devan onekondu vandadukke korakarnam
this is these are the two reasons for which the Lord has brought you into the church
nee indha sabaila maravaga irukka kuada
you should not remain as mara in the church
nee indha sabaki maduramaga maravai
but you should become a sweetness to the church
marapati ongeluk allargan teriyum
you all are well aware of mara
andhamaara enbadu tanakkulayi kasappu uladu
mara is a bitterness within us
avungapo chandutanganay ellarin kasappam matiruvaa
if they join there they will make all the others bitter
orisalalam pesananganay karama pesuvanga
some will speak with sharp words
nathu oru paperla padche
yesterday I did in the papers
oru melagavu orthan gandupichiraka
a person found a
oru melagak chili
a chili
ah melagak gandupichiraka
he found it
naatkala vacha odane oru nimshutle punnaidu andhala ukaaro
it is so uh it is so it is you place it in your mouth immediately you will be found as wounds
ebuddi irukku ningosjuvaranga
you can imagine how that would be?
ebuddina alunga irkanga
there are people like that
kara saramana alunga la irkanga
there are so hot and spicy people
orayavattha chunnapodu adukparu purushin chaagavarega alavamataan odiyabedu athapodundara yavandadumbodumpattadumbodu
with one word the husband will run away he will not live with you all through your life
kattar oni chiliavu sabaila chiliyala vekile
does God have you as a chili in the church?
ah oni kattar vandu maduramavachirukkara
God wants you to be sweetness in the church
oru vela mara varala
perhaps you might be mara
nee atthimarama arunda adha ebdi matuva
if you are a fig tree
maduramai matuva
he will turn it to sweetness
paringa mara enra edathila vandabodu tanir kasappaga irundadu
when they came to a place called mara the water was bitter
kattar chunnara andhamaara thavitti idukulla poduna
the Lord said cut off the tree and plant a branch and place it there
odane taninudhe thanme mariyur
once the branch was cut put into the water
kasappana valke kulla siluvay maravetti vilthupattu ulavandu vilnduchina ovalke inimayan maru
if the cross is cast into your bitter life your life will become sweet
apniyana sabaila kattar onene vachirukkarda atthimaramavachirukkara
so the Lord has kept you as a fig tree in the church
indha sabaki nee oru sweeta ana oru aal arukkun
you have to be a sweetness to the church
abidana abidirukkumidiama?
is that is that possible?
ongeluk peechi ongeluk seyalgal oru maduramaga maru
your works your actions your speech should become sweet
palaya kaalathil ningipalavidamana koduramana ongalai irukala
in the olden days you might be violent people
ana kattar onene matthu mudiyum
but God can change you
irundavu andhathimarathinudhe thanme narkanigal
the second attribute of the fig tree is good fruit
andhathimaran cholichay enuday madurathayin anvada mattain enudayenarkaniyin anvada mattain
the fig tree said I will not forsake my sweetness nor my good fruit
kattar onene sandhanavichamaga vekkirare
God places you as a sandal tree
ilavital pachayana olive maramaga vekkirare
or the green olive tree
ilavital indha sabaila nee oru atthimaramaga vekkirare
oh you are placed as a fig tree in the church
athinudhe oru velayarappatta thanme nathirima?
what is the greatest attribute of a fig tree?
huh? oru raja vandu raja pella veyenkaravyaadi naala pathikappattan
there was one king who was being uh he was affected by a
who is? huh? Esakyah
he was king Zekiah
avundemudugal oru veriyakatti apni paalammaru raja pella veyen tamilla choluvaga andhavyaadi vandrichi
he had a big boil on his back
maranana neringitruk
he was facing death
huh death onav neringavandritu
he is getting closer to death
ipad devamansha vandusolra
now the man of God says
nee palakamata
you will not live
nee setupavaa
you will die
om family karithala mudivilakondu vandrinchul
he set right your house
avanjolra oh na aluura
he wept aloud
appa maravidiyavunukke oru varthe kadaikaradu padinjuvarsha onakana jeevinaakal kuttitarare
immediately he received the word of the Lord saying I will add unto you fifteen years
indha gapala naramdadaenna?
what happened within this gap?
oru atthippala adaya kondu vandu adilapodanga huh? andhapiyavela vichal
they brought a cake of fig tree a fig leaves and put it upon his body
sugamaga adu setupavaa nu devane mudivudutthavara indhathippala adaya vacha odane enesira takkun sugam dies
God himself decided that he would die but when this cake of fig leaves were placed upon his body he was eaten
indha sabaila nee devi gusugamulla oru atthimaramaga irukkun
you have to be a fig tree which will bring forth divine healing in the church
oni kattar sabaila vachirukkardu devi gusugathal nikkaraduka vachirukkara
God has brought you into this church to stand for divine healing
oru pudiyarpattu sabayinudhe oru sandhadiaga kattar devi gusugathukusajyaagata onene sabaila vachirukkara
God has set you as a witness or a testimony for the new testament generation to stand for the divine healing
nee kattarine gunamakkaradu solama roadla poravana kattarine gunamakkaradu soluva
instead of you testifying that God has healed me with the man who is walking around on the road testifying
abibala thukkunani abhishekambattani poliyulula parisuthavangade sabaila irukkaran cholrani kattarine sugamakkaradu solama varayavam cholamudiyo
you were anointed and saved you had the fellowship of the saints enlightened instead of you testifying who else will witness?
siluvayil sambaditha andhdevi gusugathukusudantravaligal namda
we are the heirs of the divine healing which was purchased on the cross
anadatham bible cholukkara dhilegaludhe appom yaarukkuriyade devi gusugam dhilegaludhe appom
that is why the Bible says divine healing is children's bread
ah anadatham yesu ensnarare
what does Jesus say?
dhilegalin appathana yaarukku podamata mattavunukku kudukumata ney kuttigalukku tharamataan cholrar
I will not take the children's bread and cast it to dogs
adhu devanade dhilegalukuriyade
that belongs to the children of God
nee oru atthimaramaga irundara anegara gunamakku kudivana imaruva
if you are a fig tree then you will be able to heal many
devi gusugam enbadu devanade dhilegalukuriyade arputusugam enbadu pudiyavurulukuriyade
divine healing belongs to the people of God and miraculous healing belongs to the new ones
kattarade parisutha namathukumayum undavada
glory be to the holy name of the Lord
esaya arvati ondru onmuundraiparkumbadu
Isaiah chapter sixty one verses one and three
andhemoona vasanathinudhe kadaisi padiyena cholukkara
what is the last portion of verse three say
avergal kattar tamudiyamagimikendranatina needyin viruchangal enappadavara avergal kattar tanudheyamagimikuyendrunaatinamagin needyin viruchangay
they are the trees of righteousness planting of the Lord which she might be glorified
ebdi oru viruchang eluthin parakaramaga olagathala kadayadu
there is no such a little tree in this world
athinmara irukke
there is a fig tree
sandhanamarama irukke
the sandal tree
ah olive maramara irukke
the olive tree
ana inga oru viruchayirukka adhu ennavirucham?
but here there is a tree what is that?
needyin virucham apni bible olagathala endhamaramukkayadu
the tree of righteousness
onenyenneyukurithicholapattava varthai
it is a word which pertains to you and me
ivargal di enudaya nama mahimikendru avergal vekkeput naatapatrakrara needyin viruchangay
they are the trees of righteousness the planting of the Lord that he might be glorified
apniyana nee needyen eravetchanoo
if that is so you should fulfill the righteousness
tarayanangyanasana edukkunoo
you have to take proper water baptism
parisuthavinale naraappadana
we fill with the Holy Spirit
namudene needyen parisuthavangude needy
our righteousness the righteousness of the saints
sutthamum prakashumana melliyavastaran tharikkumidi avalukalikapattada parisuthavangude needyagale
it was given unto her to wear the fine and the clean linen it is the righteousness of the saints
adhu ennav parisuthavangude needy
what is the righteousness of the saints?
onnugundhararaamadigara vandraparkumbadu
going to first Corinthians chapter six
nasthatte poruthukolukkaraade
to endure the loss
aniayate sagithukolukkaraadu parisuthavangude needy
to bear with the injustice is the righteousness of the saints
aniayate sagikirade
to bear the injustice
nasthatte poruthukolukkaraade
to bear with the loss
apniyabidumbadu da
when we do so
adhu dam pair parisuthavangude needy
that is the righteousness of the saints
indhiyakethnavirakapidi vidamudiyo
how many of us can do so?
nee devanade nama mahimikendru sisti thuruvaikipadaitadaana needyin virucham
you are the tree of righteousness which have been planted and formed for the glory of the Lord
nee devanade needyen eravetchanoo
you have to fulfill the righteousness of God
nee seygaradu devan needyagirukkun
what you do should be a righteousness of God
manidathanmele irukka kuada
it should not be the human nature
nee pesanalan naramdalu endhan yaayindirtaloo adhu devan needy kettamari irukkun
you speak or you walk or you judge it should be according to the righteousness of God
indhiyakethnavirakapidi irukkara
how many of us are like this now?
indhiyakethnavir needyin badi chay seyalbodukara
how many of us operate or act according to righteousness?
needy seygaravan innam needy seyattum
either is just let him be or just
needy seygaravan innam needy seyattum
either is unjust let him be unjust still
ananal nam needy seygarolai maravaimantum
but let us be those who work out righteousness
avergal enudheyamagimikendru naatapatthu needyin viruchangay
they are the trees of righteousness which are planting for my name to be glorified
apniyana avangal life ebdi irukko
if that is so how should our life be?
esaya arvati onnu ondru rendu muundru vasanangala oru veriyavuulyakaravundhey valke angisithirikappattakrathade
Isaiah chapter sixty one verses one through three we have the life of a servant of God being inscribed
oru magimini needyin viruchannaenna?
what is the glory of the Lord for the tree of righteousness?
ah avungavandu irudhey norungundalukka kayangkattuvaanga
they will bind the wounds of the broken-hearted
kaan noringipodavu la tuukiduvaanga
they will lift up the broken ones
apniyakateliyavada bible alakar kattupattavale kattavilpargal
they will loosen those who are bounded or bound
saripattavale kuduppargal
they will set it liberty those who are captives
onala mudinjalavu nee kattarukku uleyan chayeno
to the extent you can you have to serve the Lord
onde peechi theramey kattarkaga bainbadu
your eloquency should be used for the Lord
onde panathke kattarkaga selavali
use your money for the Lord
onude sugathke kattarude uleyathukendru bainbadu
let your health be used for the ministry of the Lord
onde therameyala devan namu mahimikaga ubhayavapadu
let's all your abilities and skill be used for the glory of the Lord's name
kattar kudukumbadu kud
what the Lord has given give it to them
yilavasamai pettirugal yilavasamai kodungal
freely you have received freely give
yesu vathu oru varthe adu cholle
speak at least a word for the Lord
engat samaya vachala vaikattala yesu vathu cholidu
in time or out of time speak about the Lord Jesus
oru cinema nigalchila oru tipesera
in one of the cinema programs
oru avrachikappattavu oru pen
she was a saved woman
avasolra oru padam thayari chavodane screenla first padathukumalale edhambodanga thayari pallar thayari pallar thayari pallarne naa oru thayari pallaray ungalakarimukka paduthukkare avaradan unmayullu sisti karthar
if a film is being produced
avarindha olagathin produce pannivichithe oru edathala kodan naanta thayari pallarne solala tanne marathukonda yesu kristu attarasama pesna
she says about a new producer
time kadachidu sinima madaa pesanadu enbadu rampa simple yesu oru armiyana producer naa olavicholran cholutupita
she very in a very simple manner she spoke about Jesus
varavali lammelarkai thirukkandukara
no other way they all clapped hands
enamandradu
what to do?
pesanadu oru periyakodi sura producerade mahal pesera
she was the daughter of a one millionaire
avay oru veriyakodi sura producer cinema producerade mama rachikappattuka avala kondubui tanks water of tanks kuttadodane avay edhapuchikita alaga kondavandu avarana yesu producer ningellari ayathukankantu
she was the daughter of a cinema producer who was a millionaire and she took this chance giving the water tanks and she projected Jesus to be the best producer
ningapidilugirla?
will you do that?
engadu devan onala mayidaiirima mahimipadutha mudida vekkappadama
can you boldly glorify the Lord?
chance kadaikumadi yesu dhangunamakinaran cholamudiida
you get a chance are you able to say Jesus heal me?
yesu dhanayene vayathinaran cholamudiima?
can you say Jesus exalt me?
yesu dhanayene asiruvichan cholathirida?
can you boldly say Jesus is the one who blessed me?
unakapidi sugamachi yesu dhangunamakinaran daiirima cholamudiima?
how will you heal can you boldly confess Jesus heal me?
nee devanade nama mahimikendru nee yerdapattavat needyin virucham
you are the tree of righteousness which are planted for the Lord that he might be glorified
nee devana mahimipadutha avar unney mahimipaduthuvar
you glorify the Lord he will glorify you
nee avar vayarthu avar unney vayarthuvar
you exalt him he will exalt you
nee avar ganambunne avar unney ganambunvar
you honor him he will honor you
nee avaravala avaravuugundara avar unney pohala vayipar
if you will praise him he will also made you be praised
en namathay mahimipadutha oru vekkappattala avane kurithu pidavin sannidhil solan nan vekkappaduvain
if a man will be ashamed to glorify my name then I will be ashamed to tell about him in the presence of the father
oru vane namathay mahimipadutha vekkappadamal vane mahimipaduthinale pidavukumunbaga nan avane vekkappadamal mahimipaduthuvennu yesu cholrar
Jesus is if any man will without shame proclaim my name before the father I will make known of his name
vaipu kadaikumbadu devana mahimipaduthire
when you get an opportunity glorify the Lord
onde athuma devane thudikya vandum
let your soul praise the Lord
onude uleyo kattukkappattavale viduviyakku kudiyu uleyo
your ministry is to set it liberty the captives
adhaka nee indha sabaila oru magimini needyin viruchamaga naatapatrakrara
for which you are planted as a tree of righteousness in the church
indha sabaila onene oru narkkulath raachetchadiyay naatinenennu kattar esaya vallapesukkara
in the book of Isaiah the Lord says I have planted you as the choicest wine in the church
esaya indhamadigara renda vasanathai parkumbadu
Isaiah chapter five verse two
andhavoru trachayavakele narkkulath raachchadiyay onene vekkara
he has not planted you as a wine but he has planted you as a choicest wine
devan epidi onene naatraarani par
you can see as how the Lord plants you
sumasabaila vandu oru pair kaga onene vekkala
not as a normal member of the church?
nee indha sabayinudhe scuffolding kadayadu nee dhaa indha sabayinudhe buildinga
you are not just a scuffolding of the church you are just the building of the church
scuffolding naa ungaluk teriyun neenikara
do you understand what it is?
huh scuffolding naanadu
what is scuffolding?
idukku muttukuduthu nipati vichirupanga velam mudinjalone idhe pudinge engaboduva veliyaboduva ana idhu dhaanikyo
it will just bear in order to build the building the construction will be finished after the work is done it is removed
abidana?
isn't that true?
ana naman rivu moni veliyabodra alaba alkukkayadu
we are no people who will be removed and cast out
kattar onene narkkulath raachchayavaitarukkara
God has placed you as a choicest wine
abidana enna arttho?
what does that mean?
nee oru manamagilchiin naath
you are a plant which brings forth joy
indha markathala vandhitaparani nee oru narkkulath raachchayavirukkun
you are a choicest wine in the house of God
nee sandoshamulla varkun
you should be filled with joy
yappapa thaalu vittla moonevar chethuponamariyae varakuda thrimipombodi yelvar chethupitanga maripoguda moongitongodu
you should not have a long countenance whereby you say there are three people dead at your home and when you return there are seven dead at your home
esaya indhamadigara etta vasanatha pakki yala vasanatha pakkumbadu
Isaiah chapter five verse seven
seenigalim kathroodya trachethotham israelin vamsame avadhyamanamagilchi naath yudavin manshare avadhyamanamagilchi naath yudavin manshare
men of Judah is his pleasant plant
nee onnumeeladu kattarukkala sandoshamaga varkun
if there is nothing if everything will fail rejoice in the Lord
ah nee onie pathavane pochinni edukkuru vandutana sotrap sotrap naanga srinikukuda
the moment we spot you we should not say he has come lost something and we should not think like that
onnumeeladu alla irukkardu bolani varanu
even if everything will fail you should come as if you possess everything
abidam bible cholukkara
that is what the Bible says
ondru milladurundu naangal sagalathayum odayavala irukkara
though we have nothing we have everything
naangal tarutramayirundala ayusuri vangala irukkara
in poverty we are rich
onnumeeladu ni sandoshamaga varanu
out of nothing you should come with great joy
ah nee varumbadu oru listu maritiduvarakuda ayayoyo poichu potrakella man
when you come you should not come with a big list which you have lost
kattarukkala magilchiyavirupadae ungaludhe belan
the joy of the Lord is your strength
naanin devanukkula kaliguruven
I will rejoice in my Lord
namudhe sandoshanam pisasavekkappaduthara oru aadu
our joy is the greatest weapon to put to shame the devil
enna pannali unudhe radchennithin sandoshu thedukkumudilenna avabaya padanu
he should fear saying whatever I do I cannot remove his joy of salvation
yam ungal anegara koyilkukvaravadu adu
why does the devil does not permit many of you to attend the church?
yam kathiruputhukku boavadu adu
why does he not permit you to attend the tarring meeting?
nee vandapikapaiduva
if you come to the tarring meeting then you will pick up
oru prasangao oru vasanao oru abhishekaya rangichina takkunidevlopaiduva
one message a word of God and one anointing descending on you you will develop
annamudelatham onene kuduthukka oru varamadukara
that is why he does not permit you for the meeting
mandutada ivam takkun pathi erinjirua
the moment you enter the meeting you will be set on fire
adharada onene varavadamataadukkaranenbadu nee purindukalavai
understand that is why he does not permit you for the meeting
oh oru devanade dhilegal oru trachetchadiyak
every child of God is a wine
oru uyargula narkkulath raachetchadiyak kattar onene vachirukkara
God has planted you as a choicest wine
nee indha sabaila kasappana palangalai tharakuda
you should not bring forth sour grapes
adhalata angal choliyurukkada naa ellan jenjan kadaisilidu kasandu boyitsi
that is why it is said everything was done finally it was sour grapes
anal devan naunney vaitathu manamagilchiin naath
but God has planted us as a pleasant plant
bible ensnarukkara
what does the Bible say?
manamagilchiye nalae nalae aushtathan aushtanangaradu tamilla kujja palayavartha sarayana arttho medicines
a merry heart make it a good medicine
manamagilchiye nalae marundu
a merry heart is a good medicine
ah nee manamagilchiyavirudale adhuva onene sugamakiduva
if you are rejoicing that will heal you
ah ungalakethnavirakapidi irukkaringa
how many of you are in that state?
kattar nathara badhali sandoshamabo devan nariyama onatalaladu oru moodi kodanisayadu kila vilaadu
joyfully go in the path which the Lord is leading you without the knowledge of the Lord not a hair of your head will fall down
apniyavalkel edavudh naramda avarathila anbuugurukarulukka sagalamum sagalamum nanmikaduvaan narakrathade
if any incident will occur in your life all things happen for good to them that love him
oru pomblakeshala epidi marti ene jaila podanga adhu nanmaya abidini josep kattirupa
joseph could have asked that I am accused in a woman's case and I am put in the jail joseph could have questioned that way
soorukkupponadathal chota pudinge shabritti ene kulila podanga idu veriyan nanmaya abidini avmadulla kattirupa
joseph could have also questioned saying I went to give them food but they took away the food and cast me into the pit is that good?
naa ewalavu unmayarundala ondalay ene nambama jaila podanay idhu nanmaya abidini kappa
he might question saying how much of a faithful I was he still did not believe me he cast me to the prison is that good?
padinora unnachatharama soureyanu sandharnu vilndu vanangadunannan nee indha pathialada enesayana pohunu idhu dhaasingasanthatin vali
if all the eleven stars and the sun and the moon should bow down and make a way since to you then this is the way to Zion
avana setuponamara pa kujinathal elimvirva
he would be in a death state within a short while you will rise up
Orudarasanam.
A vision.
Oru vaarthae.
A word.
Kathar koodaerukkarakar.
The Lord is with him.
Ah, vodanayavam elimbirwa.
Immediately he will rise up.
Ah, nee abdiyurukkara?
What is your state?
Nee hisrevelvamsattare, nee judave, nee ennudiyamanamagilchiin naat.
O man of Judah, the house of Israel, you are my blessed choice.
Ongel, ongel ettavair kattar naatinna oru trachchachidiyaar urukiringa.
How many of you are the wine which are planted by the Lord?
Ra-trachchachidinudiyamanmaenna?
What is the excellency of a wine?
Adu devarliyum manidraliyum magilappunugara rasa.
It is a wine which makes a man and God glad.
Abidana?
Isn't that true?
Ayadipirigal onbu du padimunlaninga adapakkala.
Judges nine thirteen.
Adu devarliyum manidraliyum remaidilappunugara rasa.
It is a wine which makes God and man glad.
Adunuday taste tanee.
It has a different taste.
Oru kristonuday oru pentecostal karunday tanmeetani.
The attribute of a pentecostal man is different.
Aavani yengabottaala ombada boyidairpa.
Wherever he is cast into, he will just keep going on.
Pooney tuiki tuiki tuuki yerinjinniina?
If you cast the cat upward.
Kadishikil kila olumbodhi abdiyunduluma? Potthun olundhelimbal oondi gurandhakatinga yam yam katthum abdilaala. Adi yelavundhenikka? Huh? Naal kaalalavundhenikka?
It will land on its legs.
Adu bhaala.
Even so.
Onne kattar yendapathila nathutnall nee sandoshumapodho.
Whichever path the Lord is leading you, you should go joyfully.
Yendapathila ponnall.
Whichever path?
Nada prasangai pidi poden yosikiringla?
Do you think the message is going in a different manner?
Singaasanathukuporudukkakattar unne kondubopodhar.
God is going to take you to the throne.
On darusananereverapode.
Your wish is going to be fulfilled.
Onnekudutha soponna nereverapode.
Your dream is going to be fulfilled.
Onnekudutha vaakuthattanereverapode.
Your promises are to be fulfilled.
Onnedaleipunereverapogurade.
Your calling is to be fulfilled.
Onnekcheevanindu chunnakaariyathekattar cheyapogurada.
The Lord is going to fulfill what is pro- spoken to you.
Neemanamagilchiayire.
You'll be happy.
Kattarukulla manamagilchiayire.
You'll be glad in the Lord.
Onne dukkappudutha, onne vekkappudutha, yendavallemikisakti kadayaduni eh eh chance eh kuduthrada.
Do not give any chance or opportunity for any force or power to put you to shame or to put you to sorrow.
Onne vekkappuduthruthukko, onne dukkappuduthruthukko, chance eh kuduthrada.
Never give an opportunity for these powers to put you to shame or to put you into grief.
Simi you, payankaramaga thavi thudu shita.
Simi I blaspheme David.
Kedarnakoodarnavanna, oruve bettu veditturmana.
One of his David, David's people said, shall I smite him?
Alke thavi thennusana?
What did David say?
Amayidhir, nee yen kudikira?
Be silent, why are you jumping?
Neen kattara?
Why are you shouting?
Vidhe.
Let it go.
Yaar solirka?
Who is permitted?
Meela ulavaru pooyavantalela mannelipodran solirkarana omboorana, avanja, avar chunnadachera, nee valayapparanthana.
God has permitted him to do so, and he is doing according to the command of God. You mind your business.
Time mariinade.
The time change.
Adayaal vundhikaal lenesinja? Vilundhananavallaya?
The same person came and fell at his feet.
Vilundhananalia?
Isn't that true?
Vilua.
He will fall.
Ah, nee mangalamagilchiapoyidairi.
You keep on going joyfully.
Ayavayasana, avan kaalavilua.
Whomsoever will scold, you will fall at your feet.
Yesaya thirukatharsna ennesolukrada?
What is prophesied, Isaiah say?
Onne odukkinavarkal unpilla unkaaladilavundhu vilundhu onne panindhu unkaalanakki, nee seyonindru soluvargalnudsolirukku.
They will, those who oppress you and afflict you.
Charanata pa? Yesaya aruvudhe padinan.
Isaiah sixty verse fourteen. Unne odukkinavarkalin pilligalum gunindhu unnedathil vandhu, unne asatipaninayavaram unkaaladilpanindhu, unne kartrodinagaramindru hisreveludiyaparsutrin seyonindru soluvargal.
Innarathilavun kaalavundhu nakki unne thudiparugunudsolirukko.
Another place it is said, they shall fall at your feet and lick the dust of your feet.
Nee bayappadada?
Do not fear.
Nee sandoshumare.
You be joyful.
Yedayoyelandhutten thukappadada?
Do you not think you have lost something?
Yelandhutten thukappotena, ponnadu ponnadu daa, illa kattarukulla sandoshumare, nee yelandhu edupri kadaykavaya, yoobukirshamari, rendathanaya onnekukadaykav.
If you are thinking, you are sorrowing that you have lost something, then it is lost, but if you rejoice like Job, you will receive a double fold.
Kadaisiyaga.
Finally.
Ezekiel padineela madhikaram.
Ezekiel chapter seventeen?
Iruthi iranda vasanam.
Verse twenty-two. Kartaraga aandavarsolukratheneventha, naan uyirundhakeeduruvin nuunikilegalil onrayeduthu adinaduvin.
Hmm.
Adin nilangileyalulakodundugalil, ilasaayirkarathie onraykoidhu, adi uyiramoonnadumana oru parvathithinmel naatuvin.
Uyiramoonnadumana oru parvathithilapoy oru keeduruvain naatuvin.
I will plant a high cedar upon a high mountain and eminence.
Yesaya rendu rendhalabatha bakkumbadhu, parvathithin kodumudi enbadu sabayai kanvikaradu.
Isaiah chapter two and verse two speaks of the height of the mountain, which is the church.
Kattar onne uyirundhavoru keeduruvaga, kattar onne vaitirukkara.
The Lord has set you as a high cedar.
Ah, nee oru sadhana manushanala.
You are not just an ordinary man.
Ah, onne vandhu olagavonathu, olagathal nee vandhu position illada oral.
Maybe you do not have a right, a top position in the world.
Ana devundey kankalau onnekukirubakadachir.
But you have found favor in the eyes of God.
Neen parvekkayarumayanaabidinal nee ganambachai.
Since thou was precious in my sight, thou has been honorable.
Karana naa onne neesichirukkara.
The reason I have loved you.
Apaa aandavaram nee onne snayikirabidinala?
So because the Lord loves you.
Oh, olagaparvillani onnilatalan, devundey parvillani uyirundhakeedur.
In the sight of the worldly people, you might be nothing, but in the sight of God, you are a high cedar.
Unne uyiramoonnadumana oru parvathithilna naatuvai.
I will plant you on a high mountain, which is eminent.
Vedam ennesolukrada?
What does the Bible say?
Sonni thirandam sangiida padinora vasanam ennesolukrada?
Ninety second Psalm verse eleven?
Angene solirukkara?
What is it said there?
Paniranda vasanaliya, needimman leebanooday polisalithukkel, keeduruvipoolavalaruva.
Verse twelve, the righteous man shall grow as a Lebanon, he shall grow as a cedar.
Vaasenga?
Needibon parayipolsalithu leebanoodinulakkeeduruvipoolavalaruva.
Innikunakavalar chillaamurukalaa?
Today you might not have any growths.
Innikunakutadumachangalurukalaa?
You might be staggering today.
Ah, anaal nee keedur.
But you are a cedar.
Neen nicheyemayavalaruvaay?
Definitely you will grow.
Kristvin nerayvana valachikini valaruvaay?
You will grow to the measure of Christ.
Onnekullu oru puranundahoo?
You will have a perfection in you.
Alladhan devundey thittam.
That is the plan of God.
Kattar onne keeduruvipoolindh sabayila valaravaypar.
The Lord will make you grow as a cedar in the church.
Eenandhal onne tanneergalandail vaitirukkara.
Because he has placed you by the waters.
Marabidiyena hamayiruthi nanggu arukkuvaruva.
Coming to Numbers chapter twenty-four verse six.
Angi indhakeeduruvai pathit solirukkara.
Again, it is mentioned about cedars here.
Kattar naatinna sandhanaviruchangalodundh keeduruvun attapatrukada.
The cedars are also planted along with the sandalwood tree. Tanneerarugayulakkeeduruviruchangalipolavumirukkari.
Tanneerarugayulakkeeduruviruchangai.
The cedars which are beside the waters.
Onnekullu eppladu oru abishagavandhukundairukkano?
There should be an anointing within you always.
Valayal oru prachinaya?
Any problem at your work?
Angi onnekurabishagavarno?
Receive an anointing right there.
Om businessloru prachinaya?
A problem in your business?
Angi onnekurabishagavarno?
Receive an anointing right there.
Namaviswasi oru doctorundhar.
There was one believer who was a doctor.
Yeah, urukkarakar.
He is there.
Our acupuncture specialist.
He is a specialist in acupuncture.
Ah. Avartoru doctor treatmentundhar.
Another doctor came to him for a treatment.
Aur konjaiyasanala?
He was an elderly man.
Avaru kootu unnadu, andhada doctorday maha, avar oru doctor.
The one who brought him was the daughter of that doctor, who is also a doctor.
Oru prachinikaay, veda acupuncture treatment, andhavaysana doctor, mahalagi doctor kuttundu.
The doctor who was a doctor brought her father who was a doctor for this acupuncture treatment.
Ipeyuri treatment kuduthirukkara?
Now the treatment is on.
Usi.
The injection.
Andhakaparusi akutithirukka?
And now the injection was given.
Injection illa, acupuncture vandhu only andhapiinani siwangaa, andhanda vein porathala touching kutuanga.
The, the, the pin which is being pricked in the vein?
Ipe, ivar rendu unathala punchipannaray, vaysana doctor collapsedaitar.
He pricked in two or three places and the old doctor, he collapsed.
Abidipathitairukkara, ivar kutithairukkara, doctor poiitar.
While he was pricking in two or three places, the doctor collapsed.
Mahaada patha onne katti kuichal potte, angirukkara ICU la poyi doctorsakupurukku, oodi budich, mattada doctorakupuravodi budich.
The doctor, the doctor who was a doctor when she saw this, she made a loud noise and she ran to the other doctors who was in the ICU.
Sohamaradukonda, appa ennesinjaithara? Vehamma passaadukkara?
Ah, it was one who came to be healed, now the father is collapsed.
Ivar kala patha onne?
The moment he saw this.
Motthamave vayindithara?
He was afraid.
Yeah na?
Because?
Collapsaiikirukkada doctor, ivaro oru doctor, oodi pukkada doctor, ipakutuvarapodhu verra doctor, innimay eppudinamadhaktrane indhatal nikumudiyam?
He is a doctor, the one who is collapsing is a doctor, the one who ran away is also a doctor, and bringing other people are also doctors, how can he stand as a doctor anymore?
Ipe oru pathidhaktrukutu oodi oruva, ta-ta-ta-ta, appa chethupararu, chikara, recover bandhagan.
She will bring another ten doctors along with her to recover her father.
Ivukkayelame poyich, sari idhoda namadhi life eh close.
He stood helpless, thinking his life was come to an end.
Takkanadutha cabinukupanar.
He went to the next cabin.
Mulangalapodhar.
He knelt down.
Kayo idithira?
Raised his hands.
Ayayindhu usi kutrallam onumele, neenipathiyedadu panna tha? Ippanayamaana mariyadeelam kaapathapodunnu mulangalennintan.
He knelt down saying, Lord, there is nothing in using these needles to prick, but only you can come down and have mercy on me.
Nanaradhadan jolra?
I said, I am telling a true incident.
Indhakanvansalavundhanda doctorapath.
I met this doctor in this convention.
Avar ipa university, acupuncture university la vachikirukkara?
He is now working in the university, acupuncture university.
Avare vachirukkara?
He has a university.
Enne yoschuparanga?
You can imagine.
Ivar poyi adutha cabinet poyi, onumele usi easy lavuttar, ellapinnadikaravala nipatiache, yatta poyi pinnadichirukkara? Meela ulavutte, eppudi avadu kaapathiga, ayoyo poichin, the doctor chethitana, idhoda yan tholi le? Mudijidu cabinet close puntu veliparavundita?
He stopped his occupation and he went to one who was above and started crying to him, saying, Lord, help me.
Naradhadana?
What happened?
Oru rendu minshas thothramannar.
Two minutes, he started to praise God.
Adukullu doctorsavara satthalangayikadu, ellasumata ta-ta-ta-ta-ta-ta, oodi varuva, ellada doctor maha poyi, oru periyakutathivilthiruntai, enga appa poiitar.
The doctor went and brought a big crowd of doctors to heal the father.
Satthamkeekadu?
He heard the sound.
Ivartappunennistara?
He rose up.
Thothramanninga vandha?
After praising God, he returned.
Doctor recoverarara?
The doctor who collapsed is now recovering.
Ah, ipakannalantarakkara?
He opened his eyes.
Ivar takka takka takka, ellathiklearbani, alaha vachii, normal konduvandhitara? Maha vandhipathich, nara, chethipidharan kuttunakadislipenai budiche? Mulangal yaara ennesinjaichay? Kaapathivutich.
The doctor, doctor came back and saw the father was recovered, the niece had saved him.
Yoschupar.
You can imagine.
Namadhi nalavara enna?
What is our state?
Neyendhanalavartalavundhrandal?
Whatever be your state, you are coming.
Onnekullu oru tanneerukkano? Neetanneerarugay naattapatte? Oru keedur, onnekullu oru abishagavandhathalayaranganoo?
Right there, you should have an anointing descended on you.
Neen agakagorukuthanathutnun, jabaanathutnun, orukuthathukvandhada abishagandla? Neekarla bohumbo da abishagathodupo?
There should not be a meeting conducted for you to receive the anointing even as you are traveling in your car.
Exam halla abishagathodupo?
In the exam hall, you have the anointing.
Interview hallka abishagathodupo?
Go to the interview hall with the anointing.
Nee oru tanneerarugay naattapatte oru keedur, uyirundhakeedur, unnadamana oru anuvathukkakattar unne alaitavara?
You are a high cedar which is planted beside the waters, the Lord has called you for a high and lofty experience.
Onnekullu andhasaaram naranjirukkano?
You should be filled with the sap, the essence.
Andhakeeduruvinudiyasaaram, adhavandhiasens, andhaskati onnekullu irukkano?
You should have the essence or the sap of the cedar in you.
Noti nala sangiidam padinara vasanathalindhavaathicholapadukkara?
Hundred and fourth Psalm verse fourteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Kartrodinaviruchangalum, avar naatinna leebanoodinkeedurukalum, saarathinallirindirukku.
Saarathinalla, andhajiivan, abishagathin jivanala, neen naranjirukkano?
You should be full of the sap, which is life through the anointing.
Kattaruyaparsutthanamathukkamayumundavada?
Lord repeat the holy name of the Lord.
Nee oru keeduruvaga indhal?
If you are a cedar.
Nee valaruvaay?
You will grow.
Eppudi valaruvaay?
How will you grow?
Eppudi valaruvaay?
How will you grow?
Avarudiyarubathukvalaruvaay?
You will grow to his likeness.
Adudan leebanoodidiyakeedurundiyamanma?
That is the excellency of the cedar, of Lebanon.
Unnadapathay indhamadhikaram padinaintha vasanam.
Song of Solomon chapter five verse fifteen. Avar roubum leebanoodipolavum, keedurukalipolavum sirappayirkarathu?
Avarudiyarubum keedurukalipolasirappayirkarathu?
His countenance is as Lebanon excellence.
Nee valandhwarumbadhu, pidaa andhakumandirubathukvandhuvaduva?
When you continue to grow, you should be as a father and the likeness or the countenance of the son.
Ippladu namdevundey pilligala irukkaro?
Now are we the sons of God?
Iniyevidamayirupomindraariyo?
And it does not know what we shall be.
Anaalum?
But even then?
Avar velipodumbodhi?
When he shall appear?
Avarukopayirupomindraariindrukara?
We know that we shall be like him.
Onne yovan munruyirandeyendrundenkara?
One John chapter three verse two. Periyamalaglay ippladu devadiyapilligala irukkaro? Iniyevidamayirupomindra, innavellipadavillay? Agilum avar velipadabodhi, avarirukkaranamagave, naamavari darsipadinada, avarukopayirupomindraariindrukaro?
Andharrubathukkani vandhurva, alladhan leebanoodidiyavalach.
You will come to that likeness, that is the growth of Lebanon.
Een unne naatinna?
Why has he planted you?
Indholagathal neyengeoyurundha?
You were elsewhere in the world.
Onne sabaylagundhununnadnathukkwaranau, nee sirumaypadamalurukkavendam?
The reason for him to have brought you to the church and planted you here is that you should not be afflicted.
Rendu samvil elamadhikaram padthavasanathalaparkumbadhu, ennudiyajanangal sirumaypadamalurukkumudiyage, avargalay naan naatinai?
Second Samuel chapter seven verse ten, he says that my people might not be afflicted, I have planted them.
Indholagathal neetimay anumavithavan?
You have experienced evil in the world.
Eremia iruthinangaaari parkumbadhu?
Coming to Jeremiah chapter twenty-four verse six.
Onnekkananmuyundaga, naan unne sabayil naatinai?
I have planted you in the church that you might have good.
Sangiida naputhinale renday parkumbadhu?
Forty-fourth Psalm verse two?
Ilavatal yembadam sangiida egthavasanthay parkumbadhu?
Or eightyth Psalm verse eight?
Jadiyagali thurathivutti onne kattar sabayila konduvandhukkakarano, nee paravi paruga onne kattar konduvandhar?
The reason for the Lord having cast out the heathen and have brought you into the church is that you should spread out and abound.
Avargal ennudiyaddevunudiyapragarangalil salithirupparakal?
They shall be prosperous or they shall flourish in the court of the Lord.
Ambugaravano selippa?
He that trusted that the Lord should flourish.
Ellarankankalaimoduva?
Let's all close our eyes.
Indhakala velayil, kattar namadhi, thanudiyahalayathil naattinadinnokkathay, namakkavellipadichirukkara?
This morning, the Lord has revealed to us the purpose for which he has planted us in his house.
Nam sandhanavirucham.
We are sandal trees.
Nam pachayana olivumara.
We are green olive trees.
Nam athimmarangal.
We are fig trees.
Nam uyargulanarkulathraachchichkudi.
We are the choicest wine.
Aandodiyamahimiin viruchin, needyin viruchangai.
We are the trees of righteousness for the glory of God.
Oru uyirundhunnadamana oru keedurukkai.
We are the high cedars.
Idu daa devan namadhi, indhahabayla naattinadinnokka?
This is the purpose for which God has planted us in the church.
Konchanerav, indhamarangaludiyasaaram, namakkullanerayumudiyage, nam edanguduppo?
For a short while, let us give room that the sap of these trees come and fill us.
Ettenavirukindhavallamithava?
How many of his needs is power?
Ongelkupinigayarunne ongelkutirinchukko?
You know who you are now?
Kattarindhahabayla unne sandhanaviruchamavachirukkara?
God has kept you as a sandal tree in the church?
Pachayana olivumaramavachirukkara?
Has he kept you as a green olive tree?
Ilavatal kolumayana oru athimaramavachirukkara?
Are you a fatted fig tree?
Illa maduramana oru trachchachidiyavachirukkara?
Or has the Lord kept you as a sweet wine?
Illa maduramana oru athimaramavachirukkara?
Or has the Lord kept you as a sweet fig tree?
Ilavata ulyathukaha, unne needyin viruchamaga sabaylavachirukkara?
Or has the Lord planted you as the tree of righteousness for the ministry?
Illa, avar roubathipetukolumudiyage, unne keeduruvay vaitirukkara?
Or the Lord has kept you as a cedar to obtain his form and likeness.
Or rendu munminshay, ellar mulangalpolama?
Two or three minutes, shall we all kneel down?
Andhaleebanoodinkeedur, adunudiyasaarathinallirindrukku?
The cedars of Lebanon are filled with the sap.
Kattar onne edukaha vaitirukkara, oru oralavariu, indhakutathal ongelkukadaythukkumendranan viswasi?
I believe you might have a particular, an extent of knowledge as to why the Lord has planted you in his house.
Andhnookathaneravettumudiyage, oru visay nam samarpip.
Once more, let us surrender ourselves for the purpose to be fulfilled.
Ellarankankalaimodimulangalpadiyadu?
Let's all close our eyes, be on our knees.
Indhorekakta, sharpa, five minuteslindhakutamudiyam?
Within five minutes, the meeting will come to an end.
Vodanay Sunday school thodangon?
We will have the Sunday school immediately.
Moon, moonay halgalaningala rani pathikvandhuruviga?
All of you will reach rani path by three fifty?
Ana adukumunnal, kattar unney ahalyathil naattinadinnokkathay, nee purindhugalavendam, aday pettukollavendam?
Before which you should understand the purpose for which the Lord has planted you in the house of God, and you should receive that.
Iduvarikunne yavnaathinapathila, nee yar, enbadu onnekukurinchirukkano?
Through the path which the Lord has led you hitherto, you would have understood who you are.
Neen indhahabayla kattar naatinna sandhanaviruchamaa?
Are you the sandal tree which the Lord has planted you in the house?
Illa indhahabayla naattapatte athimarama?
Are you a fig tree planted in the church of God?
Illa devundey ahalyathinprakaratthala naattapatte pachayana olivumarama?
Are you the green olive tree which is planted in the courts of the house of God?
Ilavatal devan unne tedi piddich, oru narkkulathraachchachidiyay unne naatirukkara?
Or has the Lord sought for you and planted you as the choicest wine?
Kattarudiyuulyathalinnindru sailvada kudiyah, avarudiyamayamikandru, neen neemikappattah, needyin viruchamaa?
Are you the tree of righteousness which are being appointed for the glory of the name of the Lord to operate for the Lord and his ministry?
Allavattukum melaga, avarudiyarubathipetukollakudiyah, nee keeduruvaa?
Above all, are you the cedar which should obtain his likeness?
Naan envarthay surukkukara?
I shout in my words?
Ninga ongel ningalennidaniyinka?
You examine self?
Kattarindhahabayla unne endhamaramavachirukkara?
What kind of a tree has the Lord placed you in the house of God?
Yedandau unneyum, ennayum, pudingikonduvandhinda sabayla naatinare, yedarkaha?
You and I who have found elsewhere, the Lord has plucked us out of there and planted us in the house of God, what for?
Aandavare, naan umakai vasanaykuduppe?
Lord, I will give a sweet fragrance for you.
Aandavare, naan umakai uleyanchayve?
Lord, I will serve you.
Aandavare, naan narkkunigalaykuduppen?
Lord, I will bring forth good fruits.
Aandavare, ennudiyakolumay innimennan vidamattan?
I will not let go of my fatness.
Ennudiyabishagathal innimel korayamattan?
I will not decrease in my anointing.
Innimennan manamagilchiayiruppen?
I will be happy and joyful.
Eppudi aa, inumaripolamara, nee opukudukkara?
I surrender myself to become like you somehow.
Neer velipadumbadhu, umakkova paymarin, naan umoduvandhinayay, enakharulchayyo?
Grant me that I will become like you when you shall appear and join with you.
Aman, neepaldu oru abishagam erangampiriamanugala?
The Lord wants to have an anointing, will descend.
Ongelukullandhajivanvarum?
You will receive life in you.
Andhaviruchathinasaaramvarum?
You will have the sap of the tree.
Silveele sindhira ratthathinwallamayvarum?
You will have the power of the blood that is shared on the cross.
Aliyada jivaninwallamayvarattu?
You will have the power of an endless life in you.
Ipe, kattarunne belapaduthvara?
Right now, let the Lord strengthen you.
Oh rabaniyara, bakathu rabakathu? Hallelujah, hallelujah, ribina mana kathudamaniyara, rahaniyara? Amai. Devamenninala yathinga nyanum, talachavu veshamagunna? Devamenninala yathinga nyanu, talachavu veshamagunna? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? Devu devu naliyuthi nyanu, talachavu veshamagunna? Devu devu naliyuthi nyanu, talachavu veshamagunna? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? Hallelujah, oru minsham. Thavi thusolukrada? Naanav devunudiyahalyathil pachayana olivumarambolirukkara? Naan devundey kırubayenambirukkara?
David says, I am a green olive tree in the house of God, I trust in the mercy of God.
Innikettenavay devundey kırubayenambirukkara?
How many of you trust in the mercies of God?
Kattar kırubayinmel kırubayounakataruva?
The Lord will give you grace upon grace.
Neen indhahabayka thunaay maruva?
You will become a pillar of the church.
Indhahabayin vasanayai nee maruva?
You will become a sweet fragrance of the church.
Ey, neen sabayka oru maduramay maruva?
You will become a sweetness of the church.
Devamenninala yathinga nyanu, talachavu veshamagunna? Elara, elara? Devu devu naliyuthi nyanu, talachavu veshamagunna? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? Devu devu naliyuthi nyanu, talachavu veshamagunna? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? Devu devu naliyuthi nyanu, talachavu veshamagunna? Oh rabakathu rabakathu? Oh rabakathu rabakathu? Talachavu veshamagunna? Meeku meeku varuvaru prabichu, meeku nara ninsanile? 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 Amai. Sami bagalamaga kattarongalil, anegarodu pesikundhvarukkara?
Recently, the Lord is speaking with many of you.
Manamagilchiayire?
Be joyful.
Ennudiyasayalay maru?
Become, take my image.
Eppadu sandoshumayire?
Always be happy.
Eppadu abishagathukullanerambad?
Be filled with the anointing always.
Ennudiynamamayamikha, naan unne ubhayopaduthapogra?
I am going to use you for the name of my, glory of my name.
Ippidipattavarthegal, enakkulliyevapputukondayirukkardanisolukkunga, unmayagave, appidi oru thodhabu leadingulavuka kayvaidhanga?
Does it truly have such an urge within you, lift up your hands?
Kattar unnodu pesikirukkara?
The Lord has spoken to you.
Onakutariyam, nee oru sandhanavirucham?
You know you are a sunny tree.
Nee oru needyin virucham?
You are a tree of righteousness.
Onakukattarippladu oru abishagathatarapog?
Now the Lord is going to grant you an anointing.
Enakarambapidicha vasanam, andhakeedur saarathinallirindrunthadu?
The very beautiful verse which I like is that cedar was filled with sap.
Naanav pachayana olivumarambolirukkandhda, daiyimachonani, adiyanukupidithadu?
I like to, he boldly confessing, I am like a green olive tree.
Ettanavirukupidiyavanuvavuntheva?
How many of you want this experience?
One minute.
One minute?
Oru sakthi erangatam?
Like a first descent?
Oru wallamay erangatam?
A fire descend?
Oru jivan erangatam?
Like a light descend?
Oru akni erangatam?
A fire descend?
Ribalaka, thudaka, thudaniyara, rahanimanaya rabana? Oh thudabaka, thudabaka, thudathuda? Ribika rabakata, rabakathu rabaniyara? Thudabada, bakada, bakara, bakara? Amai. Innikikattar unney? Nadiyuram naattukkara?
Today, the Lord is planting you beside the waters.
Kattar tanneerarugay unne naattukkara?
The Lord is planting you behind, beside the rivers or waters.
Chilla soonalagali, neet kaindu, patthupoy, tadumariinane nairangalayariindavar, indhrikikattar unney, pachayana olivumaramay maathumudiyage? Nerandaramaana, oru kolumaykullununne vaitukumudiyage? Tanneerarugay naattukkara? Indi abishagathal unnekukurayave irada?
You have become dry and wet because the circumstances, now the Lord is planting you behind, beside the waters, but you may be fatness, you will not reduce in your anointing swat.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah? Oh rabakathu, rabakathu raniyara? Amai. Namakuritha devundey nookathay, onduvudupurindhugalakattar namakharulchayavudina listothramanuva? Please, 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 please. Namadhiyatanipattanalavrangali purindhugalakattarudhivi chayavudina listothramanuva? En kattar sabayil, kattarudiyahalyathil naminatiirukkara? Kattarudiyaprahagangali namavaitiruppinnookkavennanbadu? Vedavasanathithinvalichathala kattar velipadithinar, adhikai listothramanuva? Namakuritha devundey nookathayariindha, adhikadi sailbutte, eswurubadavari sandikellar karulchayamudiyay listothramanuva? Visheshamayindakullabavaniyay kattarpurupadukkavendam? Kattaradhyasirudikavendam? Climate anugulamakavendam? Ella janangalvaranu? Kattar oru periyakaariyachayamudiyay listothramanuva? Stotra, 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 stotra? Nandhanathrootangali, kattaradhamagime velangapannamudiyay listothramanuva? Kattar nindranthadesathala poodikumudiyay listothramanuva? Devasittam andhadesathala neravetchapadumudiyay listothramanuva? Ella magimi avarikayasalithi listothramanuva? Jam.
Ingla neesichirannal, aandavare, asirudikupattamadhavaymin, samuthukai nindiyodum listothrakaro? Adiyaray kandhavaramla, anglikanmanival padukathindh, parsutthanalelu? Aandavare, imigustothramadashomuthramaradhikamaymapadtha, aviyanavringli kudeshayavudina, nandiyodum listothrakaro? Uda samuthalormla, ningla asirudikarara, veepikiravara? Indhavarti naal, angli belappathukkaredevima, indhavarti naal, angli veepikiradevima? The kalevalile, ingradamathil kandhundhi, ingradarande, ellabovurpode, neen nadthi asirveethi, randhavare? Laavchayavikulaki tandhi, kattarudiyavianavringli kalele, angli odupesanalaj, jivaavarti, likhagamigustothra? Naangalvoborun devundekathavi, ahalyathil naattapattharala, naangal kaanapadengli, kunyiduvudhishimdiyaga, vendiklarangathavi? Avianavrimigustothrakathavi, naanglasandhanamarathapola, kathavi? Nadiyoriringli naattapatthadana, sandhanamarathapola, angli maathumudiyage? Avianudhakarathal, angli taalthuro? Naangal vasanudukkare, jivithi, naangal kaathukkalingli, kudeshim, aandavare? Aandavare, devanndi, anano, devanndi, ahalyathil, naattapatthadana, oliv, pachayana, olivumarathapola, ikkari, insundu, bala? Naangal kathavi, aandavare, pachayana, olivumarangla, ingradakolumayen, naangal velipadtharula, kaanapadengli, kudeshimdiyaga, vendiklarangathavi? Aandavare, imigustothrakathavi, aandavare, thodathalim, naattapatthadana, athimarathapola, angli maathu? Naangal kanigadukkarula, angli maathu, aandavare? Ingradakani maduramaayirukkattin, kathavi? Ingradakani kathavi, aandavare, kasappayala, aandavare? Maduramana kaniay, angli maathumudiyage, vendiklaro? Naangal naattapatthadana, needyin viruchangla, angli maathumudiyage, vendiklarangathavi? Aandavare, imigustothra, naangal narkkalitharadana, trachchachidiyal, angli maathumudiyage? Avianudhakarathal, taalthatharugara, aandavare? Trachchachidiyagi, ummalenilathirundu, migidiana kanivilakudukkarula, kattanathkannarkula, trachchachidiyag, angli maathumudiyage, vendiklarangathavi? Avianavrimigustothrakathavi, kattarudiyahalyathil, naangla naattapatthadana, manamagilchi naathigala, angli ovurvaray maathumudiyage, vendiklarangathavi? Aandavare, imigustothra, uyirindhedathal, naattkathavi? Aandavarikadana, andhkeedurumarathapola, angli maathumudiyage, avianudhakarathal, angli taalthuro? Uyirindhakeedur, kudeshimdiyage, vendiklaro? Ketta vathindina, naangal jivithin, naangal parsutthamakapattu, ummasandikengli, taidipadtha, aandavare? Kırubeyalavasanthikengli, taalthupadikaro? Devasumuthlandhamakal, allan kattar asirveethanappu? Maali nedukkada, anukathavi, aandavare? Bavani asirudikken, me, Sunday class, villing class, asirudikken? Thodandhuparsutthavi, avianudhakarangla, odupadarkattum? Ella thodikana, may medhukkalo? Parsutthamakumidavari, kingla, aithapaduthum? Eswinaamathal, vendiklaro, pidavay?
Amai. Namadhiyakattara, eswigisunkirubim, pidavagay, devanndi, anubharsutthavi, naikiyamum? Namani, vadasagala, parsutthavangal, kattara, eswumakimil, velipadumuttu, merupada? Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah? Stotram.